We have the agenda review session. All the way up through the ordinances on second reading. Number one, in order to amend supplementary viable ordinances in the city of New Brunswick, Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 1304 Water Service System as Section 1304-015 Water Connections. Number two, in order to amend supplementary viable ordinances in the city of New Brunswick, Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 1308 Sewer Service System, Section 1308-340, Schedule A, Schedule of Charges, amend Section 2B Industrial Rates. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, in order to adopt amendment to the redevelopment plan for the French Prospect Redevelopment Area in the city of New Brunswick. Number two, in order to amend supplementary viable ordinances in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020 Handicap Parking, Section 1020, Zero One Zero, Schedule 39 Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, Adding 35 Chester Circle for Parking on 1st Street. We have Resolutions 1 through 26. Number one, approve agenda amendments. Number two, approve payroll, 1012-19, 1025-19, Free authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by Angela Joakim, Location sidewalk in front of Angela's Salon of Supplies on 75 French Street. To inform Dominican Republic of the May 17, 2020 general elections in Dominican Republic, the dates are Saturday, November 9, 16, 23, and 30, and December 7, 14, 21, and 28 all 2019. Time is 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Number five, approve request for street closing in use of city property requested by the restaurant guys, Monument Square Park, the annual fireworks celebration welcoming the new year of 2020. Fireworks will be shot from the roof of the Hellditch Hotel with DJ entertainment at the Showmobile. Street closure locations will be including St. Avenue between Newland George Streets, George Street between Liberty and New Street, Tuesday, December 31, 2019, and Wednesday, January 1, 2020. The time is 10:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. Parking street closure for police active duty. Number six, approve off-premise travel 50/50 at the Yelts Lodge, 40 Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick, for the Millsix County Sheriff's Office, PBA 165, Monday, March 18, 2020. Seven, authorized purchase by Department of Public Works under New Jersey State approved co-op. Number six, five M C E S C C P S, the Educational Services Commission of the Jersey Pricing System, from weatherproofing technologies incorporated for the roof restoration services not to exceed $54,970.51. Number eight, authorized purchase by the Police Department in New Jersey State approved co-op. Number six, five M C E S C C P S, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Pricing System, from mall Chevrolet Incorporated for eight 2020 Chevrolet Tapos with options not to exceed $320,904.8. Nine, authorized tax collector transfer overpayments on several tax utility accounts. Number 10, approve award of contract with Concept Printing Incorporated doing business as Concept Print for printing and bodying of various forms for the municipal court. The 12-month period commencing November 8, 2019, and ending November 7, 2020. Prescription number 779-19P not to exceed $21,504.50. Number 11, approve authorization to rebid for furnishing delivered food products for the Senior Citizen Resource Center. Rebid, prescription number 778-19PR. Twelve, approve award of contract with less taxes to risk solution for online access to accident reports for the Police Department, the 12-month period commencing November 19, 2019, and ending November 18, 2020. Prescription number 7819RFP bear an open. Thirteen, approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion stated in New Jersey for Neighborhood Preservation, 2019, 125,000 with a map of 25,000. Fourteen, approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion in U.S. Bureau of Justice Assistance for Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, Fifteen, approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion Millsix County Office of Arts and History for Multicultural Festival, 2,915. Sixteen, approve amendment of Resolution R. 081942, Change Order Number Two, with the MSD Construction Corporation for Rockford Village Water Main Replacement Project Phase Three. Prescription number 771-19W, $19,563. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Number 17, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance to road closure requested by Structure Stone LLC, recent crane placement for the residences at Easton and Hamilton at the 88 Easton Avenue, Saturday, November 9, 2019, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number 18, approve amendment of Resolution R. 081947, the recent add rain date of Sunday, November 3, 2019, change inflatable company. Approve request for use of city property requested by Elias Promise of partnership in New Brunswick Cultural Center and help city sound, Joyce Kilmer Park, Mercado Esperanza Market. Rain date Sunday, November 3, 2019, 9:00 a.m. to 18:00 a.m. Nineteen, approve resolution to authorize rooffront escrow to P&amp;H LLC in care of the Advanced Realty Group, Number 20, authorize inter-local services agreement with Millsix County for paint collection program, January 1, 2020, to December 31, 2024. Number 21, authorize inter-local services agreement with Millsix County for the CFC, HCFC Recovery Program, January 1, 2020, to December 31, 2024. Number 22, authorize payment of requisition number nine for project cost for cultural center project theater component with cultural center redevelopment associates, Urban Renewal LLC in care of New Brunswick Development Corporation not to exceed $528,943.13. Number 23, resolution authorizing budget transfers, 2019 municipal budget. Twenty-four, approve resolution authorizing acceptance and execution grant agreement with Millsix County Office on Aging, Title 3 CDAF1, for Congress Nutrition Project, New Brunswick Senior Center, grant $10,000. Twenty-five, approve resolution authorizing acceptance and execution grant agreement with Millsix County Office on Aging, Title 3B, for information insistence in New Brunswick Senior Center, grant $8,927. Twenty-six, approve resolution to provide police traffic control officer allocation for the investigative force in the sanitary surf master plan not to exceed $2,500. We have discussion and public comments. All right, go. Hold the order.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Secora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
Please be advised that the notice requirements for the Open Colored Meeting Act have complied with and satisfied that the annual notice would give sufficient notice of the time and place in conduct of law-abandoned meetings in municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed by the City Clerk, has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Hall of Representatives. Please stand for a moment for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silence for our men and women in our armed forces, especially those overseas and in combat, and all those who have come back hurt. Thank you. Most we approve amendment. Second.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Secora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
Our correspondent, the City Clerk, pause.
Item one, a letter from NJDEP regarding a 1,550-gallon, number-two heating oil underground storage tank system at 82 Belton Street. Item two, a letter from G&amp;G Custom Builders LLC requesting a final reinspection at 316 Livingston Avenue. Item three, a letter from PSENG regarding the approval of changes in its electric tax adjustment credit and gas tax adjustment credit. Item four, a letter from March Construction Consulting regarding a terminated contract with Florio Management. Item five, a letter from NJDEP regarding a former dry cleaner potential exposure study at 188 Townsend Street. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, in order to amend supplementary viable ordinances in the city of New Brunswick, Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 1304 Water Service System as Section 1304-015 Water Connections. Any member from the public wish to be heard on this issue? Okay, seeing none, move your order. Second.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Secora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
Number two, in order to amend supplementary viable ordinances in the city of New Brunswick, Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 1308 Sewer Service System, Section 1308-340, Schedule A, Schedule of Charges, amend Section 2B Industrial Rates. Anybody from the public wish to comment on that? Seeing none. Second.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Secora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, in order to adopt amendment to the redevelopment plan for the French Prospect Redevelopment Area in the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, November 20, 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Secora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
Number two, in order to amend supplementary viable ordinances in the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020 Handicap Parking, Section 1020-010, Schedule 39 Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, Adding 35 Chester Circle for Parking on 1st Street.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, November 20, 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Secora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
We have resolutions 1 through 26. Any member from the public wish to comment on the resolutions at this time only? Please come up to the microphone. Seeing none.
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Secora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
Items for discussion by council. Any council members wish to say anything?
Recognizing November prostate cancer awareness, no shade of November, so every year I take my journey into Cape Man's Look, and it's a serious issue, you know, bring it up. I think it said one in, it's about 176,000-plus men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer. And we just remind everybody every year, just like we do in November, I mean, in October, when the breast cancer, remind men, especially over a certain age, to get checked. I mean, a lot of people don't want to talk about how they test, but I say it beats the alternative. So get tested and it brings friends to get tested.
We have public comments. If anybody from the public wishes to comment, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address for record. You have up to five minutes, one time only.
Is this regards to the resolutions or any public comment?
Anything, rest of the public comment, anything and everything.
Just in time. Thank you, I'm just so glad I do. Give me a moment to please speak tonight. First, I'd like to start off by speaking, wow. That's with you, Mr. Egan. How, like I said, wow, last meeting, yes, you, what you calling me damn paranoid, that I have a mental problem. I do not have no mental issue. If you do not like to hear what goes on with me saving the city, I don't think you belong up there, what you calling me paranoid because of what I do do. And like I said, wow, I will make sure that I do show the residents, maybe they know you by name, but believe me, I'm a person to prove my evidence of what I speak, how you're a person, and it's all on video, like I said, please do, how you disrespect someone, we're calling their names and whatever, how you always talking to a person in the corner, you don't pay attention, wow, the council's about a team, and it seems like, wow, you're the only one that makes negative comments like you do. And what call me paranoid? Believe me, I guarantee you, I'm known through New Brunswick better than you. What, from the Hall of Fame, from the work that I do, I have a brain, I have a brain, a damn good one, to prove my point of anything that I'm doing up here. Well, and like I said, I wish Mr. and Mrs. Lockman could have made it this meeting, but he said the next meeting. To show you, wow, I can use my brain way better than, like I said, what you're saying, excuse me, I'm just out of bed running up the stair. But like I said, for you to call me paranoid, then what are you then? Evil, because like I said, wow, the way you, Mr. Vellently, really treat me, just because what I do hateful and evilness, it will come back and bite you in your ass for disrespecting me the way you do, to call me paranoid. And like I said, wow, when it's time to run for council again, I will make sure the city not only knows your name, they know what you are like, because it's all on video. And like I said, wow, I know, sorry, Councilmember Escobar, your name is on there with him, but the situation is with you, well, wow, every time he comment to somebody, wow, you have to untie his knot, every time he gets involved with something, how you always speak to try to handle what he done did already. And that's not you, I know you're a person who care, who has a heart, but like I said, wow. And I tell you, if we went from door to door, Mr. Egan, who would have a better reputation throughout New Brunswick? I guarantee you I would, because like I said, due to where I have more heart for people, I care for people. And like I said, like, for you to call me paranoid, wow, if I was paranoid, how would I be able to do my photography, develop my own business? What photography are you going to school? Wow, if I was paranoid, had a mental issue, and like I said, when I would give Mr. and Mrs. Lockman their pictures, wow, to prove, wow, if I paranoid, what are you? What can you prove of using your brain other than temper and attitude? Which, like I said, you, Mr. Vellently, all of you, the way you disrespect me, your evilness will come back and haunt you because you will need a helping hand from a person that needs a heart, and no one will be there for you. And then, just getting to, also, we all know that time went back recently, situation, well, I'll tell you, time goes fast, but situation with streetlights again being out, with our children coming home in the dark. I'm just getting started, taking the time to get started with so many of them already, just in my area. And then, two other issues, if anyone, even if this is county, it's still getting to be unsafe. The county works with me very good, how some city workers say, what? Oh, the city's not good at all, county's not good at all. Wow, the county works better to me than the engineer at the New Brunswick does. What? This is Route French Street, Route 27 and Sanford Street. This was the first one. Okay, far and far is with accidents, with being crashed. Okay, the county repaired it. Wow, that's within the past week and a half. Accident there, wow, took out the whole entire railing. Something has to be done involved with Sanford Street and French Street. Took out all of the railings, the tree, the pole is damaged. And I'm asking someone, please, to remove the wiring. Once again, I thank the fire department for their help with this, but to show you what, you have the New Brunswick kids walking right past this, please, please, please. Like I said, do something, whether it's county or not. I will speak with them, and I know they do work with me a lot better than our engineer here from New Brunswick. Because, wow, everything that I've asked them for, wow, doesn't take no year or two years to fix, to make it safe for someone. And like I said, wow, it's just, something has to be done. And as far as with French and Sedan Street, whoa, where the county says they're waiting on the city to involve doing something. That's where someone just got hit, hit on the bicycle within the past week on that corner. That's the third person to get hit this year in that area. So yes, they're still waiting on someone from the city to respond. What are they gonna do? Sure, when you make the decision, I know it will take time to change the lights, but what is the holdup on it? Are you able, is anyone able to answer? See, and like I said, there you go, and like I said...
Anybody have anything else?
No, 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 please, I don't appreciate it. Like I said, how you let him...
Do you have any questions, or any other pictures, or anything else like that? I just want to get the so-called facts.
But please, like I said, you always try to rust somebody else out when they, but please.
We have a five-minute rule, so have to...
Mr. Anderson, you've been, I don't want to put you toward your own counsel, but come on, speak the truth. Why do you continue to let him disrespect people up here with his comments? Please, honestly, you're the best one out of all.
Anything else besides, somebody down? The railing on Sanford and French.
And then, that was, the Sedan and French situation, where it's supposed to be joint between county and the city with doing something. And then, also, I had wanted to ask, okay, the paperwork to show that what, once again, Livingston Avenue for middle school classes.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yes, that purchase order has been issued. I gave a copy to Keith Jones, apply to miss Moore.
Okay, then, thank you, okay. Last thing I will say, wow, I guess Friday or Tuesday will be the first day of cold blue. I see Mr. Jones is here tonight, I know he's in charge of it, but wow, I'm just saying, will the city be prepared for any cold blue? Big snowstorm supposed to come Tuesday?
I'm sure it'll be prepared as well as they can, so hopefully we'll find out. So I think they are.
Okay, so like I said, possibly Friday will be the first cold blue, got a lot of cold air coming, and then a snowstorm Tuesday. But okay, thank you, like I said, I credit, I will be able to make it to the next meeting to present, where I did get the message to them, they're all supposed to come, Mr. and Mrs. Lockman, and like I said, Mr. Egan. Wow, when I show you what I can do, like I said, you will be sorry for calling me damn paranoid.
Try and do that first, so Mr. and Mrs. Lockman can go down their merry way.
No, no, I spoke, the message will already, come to the next meeting, so I can present it to them.
I would say, we're gonna try to do that early, so they don't stay there, so hopefully we...
Yes, I understand that, yeah, 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 I understand that. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to make any comments? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Secora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
Yes. Thank you.